We will, excuse me, welcome everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. And we start our meetings with an invocation which we observe by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Clerk, will you please take the roll? Agent.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Hanny Keith.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willetts. By present, one absent.
Next up, we've got minutes from October 3rd for approval.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the City Council Minutes for October 3rd work session and regular evening session.
Second.
Clerk, will you call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Hanny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And now, we've got a couple items under special business. First, the appointment of Esther Seha to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term that would end October 2027. Esther's with us tonight. She was a member of the robust Citizens Committee related to the modern zoning code and gave hundreds and hundreds of hours of service through that, both hearing from the public on feedback, reviewing the code, suggesting changes, and having a lot of discussion with the members of that committee on what the code that we were all delivered ought to look like. So really appreciate her service and believe she has just the right background now to serve on planning zoning, to take the seat that was vacated by Councilmember Sted.
Madam Mayor, I ask of you on this consent, that Esther Seha be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term ending October 2027.
Without objection. You're official. Congratulations. You're welcome to say anything if you want. It's not a have to, but...
Thank you. I'm honored for this opportunity. Boise's been my home since 1995. And I would say in the last two decades, I've been in this room probably more times than I wanted to for P&amp;Z and City Council public hearings. So it's almost a full circle. And yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity. I look forward to the hard work and the challenges ahead of us. So.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to add that I know that Commissioner Seha is going to be an amazing addition to the group. She has come, as she mentioned, she's come over the years to planning and zoning consistently with really thoughtful feedback and testimony to provide that is fair and really looks at both sides of an issue. And I look forward to reading that same kind of thoughtful deliberation in the minutes from planning and zoning. So congratulations, Esther. Definitely well deserved, and the city's lucky to have you.
And next, we have the appointment of Krista Paulson, who's also with us tonight to the Boise City Ada County Housing Authority for a five-year term that ends, well, I guess this is specific, a five-year term that begins on November 1st, 2023, and ends on October 31st, 2020. She will join the commission. She's a professor at Boise State in the Urban Planning Department, came highly recommended by my housing staff and staff of the Housing Authority, and really appreciate your willingness to serve.
Madam Mayor, ask for unanimous consent that Krista Paulson be appointed to the Boise City Ada County Housing Authority for a five-year term, November 1st, 2023 through October 31st, 2028.
Without objection. Thank you. You are official. You are welcome to come on up and say a couple things, too.
So first of all, thank you for the nomination and the confirmation. I'm incredibly excited about this role. Since arriving in Boise in 2019, I've spent my time looking at housing issues in our community, and there's nothing more central to the well-being of our community than having stable and accessible housing, to having a place that they can call home, and to having neighborhoods that are supportive. And I look forward to learning from my fellow commissioners and to being part of their range of solutions to the housing challenges that our community faces. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Krista.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say thank you and congratulations on the position. This is one that's actually a lot of work. We've got a lot of different positions that we appoint. Some of them are a lot more work than others. This is one of them, and it's a really important one as well. So thank you for the dedication to this position.
And you should both feel free to leave whenever you'd like. Of course, you're welcome to stay, but you're not expected to stay. All right. Next up, we have revised findings and a revised findings and a revised reason for decision for CAR 19-4, PUD 19-12, and SUB 19-16. Tim Keen is here to provide an overview, and everybody receive this in advance. Thanks, Tim.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Tim Keen, Director of Planning and Development Services for the city. This item is a revised reason statement for development, for a development in Northwest Boise called Prominence. The City Council originally approved the rezoning, plan unit development, and subdivision for Prominence on October 24th, 2019, following a public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 13th, 2019, and a public hearing by City Council on July 16th, July 23rd, and October 1st, 2019. Northwest Neighborhood Association filed our Judicial Review Action challenging the decision. Ultimately, the Idaho Supreme Court held that the 2019 reasoned statement, which council approves in conjunction with their approval of the zoning, plan unit development, and planning unit development and rezoning was insufficient because it lacked necessary supporting facts as to the adequacy of fire service to the proposed project site. The order from the court set aside the council's 2019 decision and remanded the matter to City Council to adopt a revised reason statement regarding the fire service for the development. The revised reason statement provides more detail as required by the court regarding the adequacy of fire service and reinstates the decision. We recommend approval of the revised reason statement, which includes the added specificity related to fire service.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the revised findings and revised reason for decision as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would just say that I looked through the revised reason statement, revised decision. It was an accurate reflection of everything that I saw, and I think it's perfectly appropriate.
All right, further discussion. Clerk, will you call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Hanny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence. Before the council takes this up, I just want to flag a couple things on here. First off, the first resolution is in agreement with NeighborWorks. Bed Combers is here. Appreciate the partnership that the city has with NeighborWorks. And this is a grant to help with financial assistance for home buyers that are buying homes that NeighborWorks has built. And then also, we had on the consent agenda, the, excuse me, in the work session, the discussion about clean electricity through the Clean Energy Your Way program. That is on the agenda, the memorialization of that. And there's also a whole bunch of investments in partnership with ACHD and ITD for traffic enforcement mobilization projects, something that we've been hearing a lot from the public, hearing a lot about from the public. And with that, I wanted to also, I forgot to mention that some of the final two are related to the final portions of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, as well as there's a grant here for Denton Street that is gap financing from our EWRAP dollars, gap financing to create more affordable housing within our city.
Madam Mayor, I move the Resolution 613-23 be deferred for one week to give staff more time to complete the documents. That's item number 15. If people need to see it.
Will do. That's about some small diameter sewer rehab.
Correct.
Second.
Motion, second. Clerk, will you call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Hanny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion. Clerk, will you call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Hanny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. We have no ordinances on the reading calendar today. So we'll move into public hearings. We've just got two. One's a surplus, one is an appeal. I know, I think there are a couple people online since I saw, I think Melinda's online. I'll check in for each of these. But first, we have proposed surplus of city-owned land at 2002 Raymond Street. I see that Maureen Brewer is presenting. Maureen, are you online?
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, Maureen is unable to be here with us tonight, but I'm prepared to present on her behalf.
Great, Melinda. That's why you're here. Welcome. So we'll hear from Melinda, and then I'll see if there's anybody that is here to testify on this item. Go ahead, Melinda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for the background noise. I've got a very unhappy two-year-old, unfortunately, with me tonight. But I will share my screen reason and share with you about the surplus of these properties.
We can see the screen, and I just want to say, don't worry about your little one. We're all as well here. And if we hear him, we hear him.
I'm sorry about that. Okay.
No, not at all.
We're here. We're here tonight to share about 2002 North Raymond Street, which is currently a property that's part of our affordable rental portfolio. Unfortunately, this unfortunately, this property has significant damage to the inside of it. And as you can see in some of these photos. And unfortunately, here, you can see the difference between what the revenue for this property is on a three-year average versus the expense for the property. And then, at the moment, there are unfortunately a significant number of repairs that would be needed in order to bring this property back up to a rental standard that we would be able to rent it to another household. So as you can see, we're requesting that the City Council approves surplus of this property. At this time, we believe that the best use for it would be to be removed from our rental portfolio and then to be sold at an auction for the highest bidder. You can see here kind of the steps that we would move through, first being this public hearing. And then our goal would be to list this again for auction to the highest bidder. One of the reasons for this is due to the number of repairs that are needed for the home and the fact that we don't feel like this would be a good opportunity for an affordable homeownership opportunity because of those repairs and the cost that it would take to bring this home back up to a livable standard. So that's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Melinda. Melinda, I think you're good right now. Anybody here to testify on this? All right, Melinda, thanks for joining us tonight. It's tough to juggle in the evening, and I appreciate it. I'm going to close the hearing, so you can move on to what you really need to be doing, and thanks for joining us remotely.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
First, props, Melinda, for powering through, being a mom, and doing the job at the same time. Very impressive. Second, I move approval of Resolution 621-23.
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion. All right, clerk, will you call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Hanny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
No.
Sted.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, one opposed, motion carries. All right, and now we will move into the Appeal of PUD 2267. Sabrina Mortensen is presenting for the city. The appellant, Tammy Zokan, welcome, is here. The applicant is Gardner Company. Jeff, are you here representing them? All right. And then we've got two people on the parties of record, Margaret Lauterbach and Justin Gope. Gope, are either of you here? We have reason to believe that you won't be, but I wanted to check. Please let us know if you're online. And then we'll go in that order. The Neighborhood Association, I don't see Kim here. We don't expect Kim to be here. Kim, are you online? All right, we'll go Sabrina, Tammy, and then Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. The item before you is an appeal of PUD 22-67. On August 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the request for a general exception to apply the C2D zoning district standards to the entire subject property in order to develop a mixed-use project, including multifamily, a hotel, and a religious institution, a height exception, and a conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of 183 multifamily units on 9.12 acres were also included. On August 24th, the appellant appealed the commission's decision based on the ground show on this slide and further details in your packets. The appellant believes that the Planning and Zoning Commission failed to consider the development's impact on pedestrian and bicycle safety and placed adequate conditions to mitigate those impacts.
Sabrina, I'm going to have you pause just a second. We forgot.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, Madam Mayor.
Oh, that's all right. I did too, and you're free to like.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to recuse from this item. I heard this and gave opinions at planning and zoning. So I'm going to dismiss myself from this. So sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Okay. However, the commission did consider the potential impacts of the development and placed a number of conditions requiring the applicant to construct an extended turn lane on Sunrise Rim Road, a bus stop in the northwestern corner of the subject property, and curb gutter and detached sidewalks along all of the site's street burnages other than I-84 in order to mitigate those impacts. The commission also specifically discussed pedestrian and bicycle safety during their deliberations and modified the conditions of approval to limit the access point onto Wright Street to emergency access only in order to reduce potential points of conflict between vehicles and pedestrians and cyclists. The appellant asserts that the commission's decision was in conflict with the city's transportation action plan as it will not add pedestrian and bicycle improvements at the intersection of Vista Avenue and Sunrise Rim Road. However, these concerns were not raised until after the public hearing and the commission's decision, and these improvements would also be located off-site and would not be proportional to the impacts that created by the proposed development. The Development Code stipulates that where there is room for two opinions, action is not arbitrary or capricious when exercised honestly and upon due consideration. As detailed in your packets, the commission reviewed the full record, including comments received from the public and other agencies, and held a public hearing in compliance with requirements of code prior to rendering their decision. In conclusion, the planning team does recommend denial of the appeal, and I'm happy to stand for any questions. I would also note that we do have representative from ACHD, Edison Batista, online as well to answer any questions that you may have for them.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, yeah, a couple questions. So first, from my understanding through the transcripts, it looks like along Vista, we would be requiring that that be changed into a detached sidewalk. Along this, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct.
And do you know if we gave any stipulations on like the width or anything, or is it just whatever is in our city code for that particular one?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, the condition is to provide an eight-foot landscape buffer with street trees and then a five-foot detached sidewalk.
Madam Mayor, then the follow-up discussion there. There was some conversation in the transcript about bike lanes on Vista, and I was trying to understand exactly why, maybe this is a question for the applicant as well, why there wasn't going to be improvements to the bike lanes on Vista in the construction of the project.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, the section of Vista that's adjacent to the subject property is currently improved as a Level 2 bikeway to ACHD standards. Their roadways-to-bikeways plan does indicate that there's potential for that to be improved to a Level 3 bikeway, which would include a protected or detached facility in place of the current unprotected bike lane. However, I believe the commission found that those improvements were not proportional to the impacts of this one development.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask a question of the ACHD person online? Hey, Edison, how's it going?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council.
A question I had was, it sounds like there's currently type-two facilities on Vista. Sometimes when we approve a larger development and we make them do improvements to pedestrian connectivity, whether it's a bike lane or the sidewalk or both, I'm trying to figure out with Vista if the type-two facility that's there, if that meets your current matrix for the amount of traffic and what the level of safety for the bicycle infrastructure would be, and if it's meeting that or not.
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for your question. So as we denote in our staff report, the reason that we don't require any improvement at this moment is because this is fully improved to its maximum width as it currently is. These improvements were, I think it was noted in the staff report, that as part of the bridge improvements and then which was part of the approaches. Regarding your question regarding the livable street performance measure, potentially at this point of time, certainly that based on the traffic and the typology of this type of road, we would require a higher level, a higher level, in this case, Level 3. Just that since this project was built out and constructed to its ultimate configuration in the past, at this point of time, we, based on our policy, we are not requiring any specific improvements.
Thank you.
Any further questions for ACHD or staff at the city right now? Right, thank you very much. We will have the appellant up. Tammy Zokan, welcome. Before I get started to address the questions that you just asked, so the improvements that you asked about, the bike lane that you asked about, that's all south of the intersection. That's all improved. This is about the intersection north to get north, to get to the east, and to get to the west. This is not about the existing bike lanes. There are no bike lanes south of this intersection. When we see these senseless, senseless traffic deaths, they hit home in so many different ways, and they're just frustrating and sad because we know they're preventable. And losing one person is one person too many. It's a quote from our mayor, Idaho Press, August 19th. "We've had a really heartbreaking year when it comes to pedestrian and bicycle fatalities. We want to make sure we are both responding to these in a way to fix problems, but we are also doing whatever we can to prevent crashes like this from happening in the future." That's from Council President Hallie Burton, Idaho Press, September 28th, 2023. "That's what my public comments and this appeal are about: taking steps to fix known problems and prevent reoccurring pedestrian and bike and car near collisions at the Sunrise Rim-Vista-Elder intersection, and preventing potential crashes and bodily injury in the future. My initial written comments described the increased pedestrians crossing the intersection and the near misses. These near misses have involved me and my dog and others. According to city staff, my real-life events that I have experienced, I have witnessed, and I have brought to their attention are not evidence supporting my claims. That's upsetting to hear from Boise City and is not consistent with your published planning documents or public statements. If his citizens' experience are not evidence, please tell me and all of your citizens what is. I hope it doesn't have to be an accident report or a death notice. Even if my real-life experiences are not considered evidence, the city's own records provide evidence of the dangers to pedestrians, cyclists, and cyclists on the Vista corridor. This data from 2005 to 2015 led the city to designate the Vista corridor within the high-injury network. Again, this is south of the intersection, not north towards the airport. And the city recommended evaluation of impacts and safety for all modes when considering increases to roadway capacity, like the increases that will happen at the referenced intersection and along the high-injury Vista corridor."
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just want to make sure that I'm talking, that I'm understanding the intersection you're talking about. You're talking about Elder Street and Vista just north of the development, on the northwest corner.
Correct. And then to be clear, Sunrise Rim is to the east, Elder is to the west, Vista's in the middle. I noticed during the public hearing before the commission, people were referring to that Sunrise Rim leg as Elder. So it's Sunrise Rim to the east, Elder to the west, Vista running down the middle. Yeah, I think you flipped the directions in the most recent statement you had about the Vista corridor. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the dangerous Vista corridors to the north. To the north, yeah. Not to the south. Thank you for catching that. I needed a few extra reminders that I said that wrong.
I got it wrong twice earlier today, so totally understand. I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Thank you. "If this project is built out, there will be additional roadway capacity added to that intersection and the high-injury Vista corridor. The city has also recommended the addition of pedestrian safety improvements at dangerous intersections and the addition of bike intersection treatments along this corridor. And the city has determined that giving more weight to LOS, which is the standard used by ACHD for its analysis and recommendations, by giving LOS more weight over other measures of safety ignores the social cost of injuries and the benefits of lives saved. The city has the evidence about pedestrian and cyclist dangers and what it can do to fix them. The city needs to give its evidence due consideration before increasing car trips through the dangerous intersection and high-injury corridor. Applicant and staff talk about consideration of bike and pedestrian improvements adjacent to the project site, along the residential streets, and south of the intersection, but make no mention of the single intersection that serves more than 30,000 cars a day. And that 30,000 number is from the year 2019. And the same intersection that pedestrians and cyclists must use to get any farther north, west, or east other than going to a convenience store or bus stop. They did not mention my public comments about the dangerous Sunrise Rim-Vista-Elder intersection. And while I appreciate this consideration of safety in these other areas, the reason I had not focused on them is because of the significant safety issues at the Sunrise Rim-Vista-Elder intersection and the increased danger from adding more than 2,700 new trips per day to that intersection and related facilities without any consideration of any improvements to pedestrian and cyclist safety. The primary attention given to that single intersection was ACHD's LOS evaluation and recommendation based on those traffic counts from 2019 and for providing connectivity for cars and giving cars a longer turn lane to turn. Again, no consideration of pedestrians and cyclists using that same intersection that must be accessed to connect to most amenities and businesses located north, west, and east of the development. The city claims the Sunrise Rim-Vista-Elder intersection is off-site, and any improvements to it would not be proportional to the development's impact. The record contains no evidence that pedestrian and cyclist safety issues were considered at this only intersection providing connectivity for the development northwest and east, either under current conditions or with the addition of more than 2,700 trips per day. Again, these concerns I raise in my public comments. My public comment also noted the lack of engagement with ACHD about these issues. I referenced the recent actions on the Seasons on the Bench and Vista Point projects nearby and the safety improvements that resulted once the city did engage with ACHD. As I pointed out, and if you recall, when the council directed staff to go back and engage with ACHD about pedestrian cyclist safety, two crossings were added adjacent to the projects, and one crossing was added across Federal Way at Malad, which is off-site. But back to what is most important and what my public comments and this appeal is about, and that is working to understand and act to prevent preventable injuries and death. There should have been some consideration of pedestrian cyclist safety concerns and potential improvements for this intersection. Potential safety features like look signs- Potential safety features like look signs, lead pedestrian interval, LPI crosswalk signals, enhanced crosswalk visibility and painting, maybe even a larger space to buffer pedestrians waiting to cross at the northeast corner. These should have at least gotten some consideration. And I have no doubt that had the city considered its comp plan, specific and general guidance for this area, at least some safety feature that would aid pedestrian and cyclists at the Sunrise Rim Vista Elder Intersection would have been recommended as part of this approval. At least one thing that would lessen the chances of preventable serious injury or death. Not looking at all the facets of the city's compliance, comp plan is arbitrary, capricious, and an abuse of discretion, and that has legal consequences. But not looking at pedestrian cyclist safety at the only intersection providing connectivity to the development before adding thousands of car trips to that intersection per day. That has deadly consequences. Do I have time for rebuttal if I don't use it now?
You have a rebuttal at the end, but it's set, the amount of time is set. I think it's five minutes.
Okay, I'll stop there.
Okay. Well, there might be questions. Just a second.
Just a point of order. I don't, I think there was a miscommunication. You can, you have a reserved amount of time. You don't have to cut your rebuttal time out of what you have now. You have it no matter what. So I don't know if that changes what you wanted to say. Correct.
Five minutes should be plenty for my rebuttal. Fall hold. Thank you for the clarification.
Did I, I just, I have a question. Did you? Was there an ACHD process as well? Did you go before ACHD with these requests?
What I did with ACHD, so I moved to this area in April. The, there was a public meeting, our neighborhood meeting, I think it was June 2022. So I learned about the project. I learned about the TIS. I got a copy of the TIS. I didn't think it evaluated the issues and then I thought it had some information incorrect. So I contacted ACHD and I asked them, I told them about my concerns and I asked them how I contribute. And they told me that it wasn't the time for public comment and they took my information and that they would contact me, that they were still reviewing the TIS and there would be a public process. So I communicated with Mr. Beeter about that because he's the one who gave me the TIS to let him know what I heard and he had a different understanding. So I called ACHD back again and confirmed that now wasn't the time for public input on the TIS and I would be contacted when it was time for me to talk about my concerns with the project. The next thing I know, this was up for public hearing this year with the, uh, nothing changed with the TIS and the recommendation are already being made by your staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I, I didn't know to reach back out to ACHD until it was too late.
Okay, that's fine. I just asked because I think in the last, in the other case that you referenced where we sent staff to go back, both agencies had had folks talking to them. So I was, I was just curious, but thank you.
And may I clarify? So it was our public testimony. It was the neighbors who communicated to ACHD at the same time and we had someone talking to us. Who said, you know, we will talk to the city. And then when we came before you and you asked your staff to go communicate more with ACHD, that that connection really took place and that collaboration happened.
Great. On the last case.
On the Seasons on the Bench and Vista Point, correct, not this one.
Thanks. All right, thank you. And now we will hear from the applicant.
Mayor, Members of Council, Jeff Wardle. My address is 251 East Front, Suite 310, Council for the applicant. We agree with staff's analysis that they've provided to you and we agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision in this matter approving this application. In fact, if we had a time machine and we had known that you were going to adopt the zoning code rewrite for how long this has taken us, the fact of the matter is that this application would not be before you. None of the issues that we had to pursue and address via conditional use permit will be required on December 1st. In fact, we could obtain an applet, we could obtain a permit pursuant to a development, a design review application. And so I am certainly sensitive to how we need to improve the, uh, facilities in this community, but what the appellant requested of planning and zoning, uh, staff was absolutely correct that the appellant was seeking to impermissively exact offsite improvements that are north of this intersection. And when we look at the constitutional standards, there has to be an essential nexus and there has to be a roughly proportionate allocation there. Now, why to the north is it problematic? It's because Vista is constrained. And as ACHD staff noted, and when you saw the, uh, the site plan there, when this intersection was rebuilt by ITD, it was rebuilt to its ultimate configuration. And we had that discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Right of Way was condemned from this property to facilitate that and the current improvements between Elder and the interchange reflect that ultimate build out. Now there are bike facilities there, but ACHD's, uh, ACHD's current bikeway plan does not contemplate a bike facility going north there because of the constraint that exists on the Vista right of way as you cross the New York Canal. Now, ultimately, when we look at this application and we look at the discussion that was held at Planning and Zoning, almost the entirety of the discussion that the Planning and Zoning Commission had were about the issues that the appellant at says were not adequately considered. It was about the pedestrian and bike facilities that would be improved and be required to improve. It was about the elements of the project that would be necessary to ensure safety for those on Sunrise Rim. It was about ensuring that there was not unnecessary amounts of traffic forced into that intersection. In fact, when you look at the record, the Planning and Zoning Commission spent a lot of time going through and evaluating that. That's why the commission modified its conditions and that's why the commission spent time discussing the improvements on Vista. Now, there was a lengthy and detailed TIS prepared consistent with ACHD's requirements that identified additional improvements and did a full evaluation of safety at the intersection. No one minimizes safety, but the reality is, is that what is being sought here is not consistent with either ACHD standards or plans and is elevating the comprehensive plan above the actual requirements of the Boise City Code. So I don't think anybody has minimized the appellant's personal experience. The fact of the matter is the Planning and Zoning Commission did an in-depth evaluation and a very detailed discussion on an application that had been pending nearly a year. And to recognize that ultimately this appeal is rendered moot by the fact that you've adopted a zoning code which encourages this very type of development at this location. It's a true mixed use development. It's the true redevelopment promoting affordable housing at a location that has excellent proximity to transit and employment. It is a location that includes uses which have complementary, uh, traffic patterns. It's a use where we implement and carry out the goals that you have for different types of housing being developed within projects so that we have a variety of housing types and a variety of price points available for all. Now, ultimately, the issue is, was there error in the Planning and Zoning Commission's action? And while the appellant may disagree, the fact of the matter is the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted the evaluation required under the Boise City Code standards for PUDs and conditional use permits. Now, the last point that I want to raise, because I've raised it on every appeal that I brought before you is our notice provisions, the Boise City Code for appeals from the Planning and Zoning Commission by non-party applicants contravening the Constitution of the United States. And I will add that to every, every memo that we submit on these until such point as we, we fix that. Because we, we need to fix that. So ultimately, ultimately, we don't disagree with any of the concerns that have been articulated. We disagree with the solution that the appellant is advocating. And it is important to note that this project not only is making those frontage improvements that have been required by ACHD and your staff, but will also be paying impact fees which fund system improvements that will be funded in the future. And if Vista Road, this, if Vista were to be widened as part of ACHD's, uh, capital improvement plan to enhance those facilities, there would be impact fee dollars available for that. So there was no error. We request that you uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and I'll stand for any further questions you may have.
Questions?
And, Mayor. Jeff, appreciate the point about the new modern zoning code. Also, you still have to work with staff and staff can direct you to do different improvements. And when the zoning code passes, it would also be corresponding with ACHD's new pathways plan that would require you to build an off-street bike pathway. So like, yes. And also, yes, there still will be requirements going forward on all these applications for the piece of property, your furnished property. I think you're talking about you, you just basically go up to the gas station and then from there you're taking care of everything except for when you get to the gas station. Is that correct?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, Hallie Burton, that is absolutely correct.
And then what's the treatment around the gas station? What, what do you have to do for the furnished property at that spot? Is it a wall? Is it a sidewalk? What is, what goes there?
There are no improvements to Jackson's property. All improvements are on our right of way and our, our frontage.
Yeah, the property you're talking about is on your property going around the Jacksons. What's the treatment that you're doing there?
Well, there's still, I don't believe, going to be a connection there. And we are relocating the bus station from the frontage adjacent to Jackson's onto our property.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now we will go, I want to just confirm the Neighborhood Association is not here. Alrighty, I saw that Justin is a Gop or Galp is online. Oh, is that you? Okay. All right, um, I'm going to go first with Justin. I've just got to make sure you're a party. Where, did you send in an email or were you at the plant? Okay, um, I'll discuss that. Hi there. Um, I'll discuss that after. Let's have, I see Justin and family. So Justin, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, you did get it right. It is Gop. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I am here with family, obviously. I'm not very clear on how the internal process works, so.
You've got three minutes, which I think you might be able to see on your thing and you can just say what you need to say.
Excellent. All right. You tell me if I go out of bounds on what I'm saying on this. So as, as I understand it, um, and I spoke last time when the planning, this came before, uh, the Planning and Zoning Committee. I am very much in favor of this project going forward, but I am also very concerned i- in parallel with the, uh, concern raised in the, oh, now I see it. Thank you for that. The concerns raised in, in the appeal, um, I've had, like, my son has been hit on his bike at this very intersection, a point, because it's three houses that way. Um, the very intersection we're talking about, the, uh, that northeast, um, corner of Vista and uh, Sunrise Rim slash, slash Elder. So I've, I don't know, I don't think that by itself is worth changing course on this development because I'm also very in favor of moving forward. But I, I am also really concerned and I do want to share that, you know, with my kids, I don't let them walk to school or bike to school. Uh, I, I did last. Sorry about that. I did last with my sixth grader a- and he got hit by a car. He's okay, thankfully. Other parents in neighborhood don't let their junior high kids walk or bike to school specifically because of the intersection as well as for going down, as, as I, I think I already mentioned, going down, uh, north down Vista. So I think this problem is not unique to this development plan and therefore, in my opinion, shouldn't, I mean, shouldn't block the appeal. But I do hope that there is another avenue for raising this concern. I think it's incredibly valid, especially as Boise continues to grow. As Vista is continuing to be an area of, of desired development for very good reason for the city of Boise. You know, the whole corridor between the airport, what people first come in to see when they come into town, coming down to access to, um, access to the university and to downtown, both for, um, you know, working class residents of the city and those who are, are living in and working in the same city and having the public transit access. Vista is absolutely a way to do it. And if we, you know, if we don't fix it for all the people who are living here and those who will live here very soon, it's not going to get better. Um, I have also, just as a side note, I don't know if there's a better process, but I have personally filed a few, um, comments, feedback, I'm sort of there, with ACHD hearing last, when I came here last time for planning and zoning, that that was the body which was more responsible, thank you Talia, for, uh, for roadway improvements, pedestrian safety, and specifically talking about the safety of pedestrians, cyclists and the ambiguity of the traffic patterns going on here. So, um, I don't have a point only that I absolutely back up all, all of the concerns, um, voiced in the appeal. I, I just, I don't know that, you know, I don't personally support it blocking this development. I want both to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Justin? All right. Thanks so much. Bye, everybody. So the other person that's a party of record is Margaret Lauterbach. Is Margaret with us? Okay, sir, this is an appeal. So you had to have sent an email or been at a meeting to be a party of record to be able to testify tonight. All right, all right. Thanks for being here. I'm sorry we can't have you participate. Is there, I just want to make sure one more time that nobody's online. Okay, all right. With that, before we go into rebuttals, are there further questions for staff?
Someone else has got to jump in here. So I'm not the only one. I got accused earlier of making meetings run long and that's exactly what's happening. So here, here's my question. In the planning zoning meeting, it looks like the 10-foot detached or five-foot detached sidewalks goes up to the gas station and then they stop on both sides. At that point, they'll just go back to whatever exists in front of the gas station. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct. They would be detached and then cut back in to connect with the existing attached at that corner.
And since the gas station property isn't the property of the developer, I guess I don't understand what our means would be to requiring five-foot sidewalks within somebody else's property. Is, is there?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, no, we typically wouldn't be able to require that, especially because there's not room in the right of way to accommodate those. It would have to be on that other property.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All right, we will move into rebuttals for C. Uh, you, you get the last word because you're the appellant, so I'll have the applicant. Nope, other way around? Oh, okay. I was gonna say my notes say otherwise. All right, thank you. Come on up.
Thank you. And if I may respond, so this is not about the Jacksons.
This, this will need to be part of your rebuttal.
Correct. Yeah. This is not about the Jacksons Corner. That does have wide sidewalks. So by Jacksons, nice sidewalk across the street by the New Del Taco, nice sidewalk, a nice corner, nice place for pedestrians to stand. The opposite corner, the, uh, the west, northwest corner has a wide space for pedestrians to stand. That northeast corner, if you look at the pictures, I have pictures in my appeal that shows you it's a really tight corner for folks to stand. That's where my neighbor mentioned that his kid has been hit by a car and trying to approach that intersection. And again, to focus, this is about the intersection. This is not about Sunrise Rim going to the east or Elder going to the west. This is the intersection. And unless I watched the wrong YouTube video from the Planning and Zoning Commission and read the wrong record, the intersection and pedestrian and cyclist safety in that intersection was not considered. Yes, I mentioned northerly improvements that are needed. The intersection is the most critical. It is the intersection that this development's residents will need to go through for their primary access for northwest and east areas within the city, businesses, amenities, et cetera. This is also not about me asking the city to elevate its comp plan to something that's above what is in city law. The case that cited by the applicant, the Blaine County case, I'm giving the citation, not the name, because I can't pronounce the party's name, at 130. I'm giving the citation, not the name, because I can't pronounce the party's name, at one thirty four Idaho through fifty-three. There, the court did say, the Idaho Supreme Court did say that you can't elevate the comp plan above other city laws. But it also said the governing body is required to look at all facets of the comp plan to assure the land fits within all various considerations set forth in the plan. That did not happen here. City staff also said that my comments in my appeal were not in the record because my concerns were not raised in my public comments. I'd like to clarify that my public comments said more than once that I had concerns about the city not needing its city blueprint policies and goals, including because it had not actually conducted a review of impacts and safety and connectivity needs and had not gate engaged with ACHD on options for increasing rather than decreasing safe and accessible pedestrian and cyclist uses. And because there was no reference or any attempt to address pedestrian cyclist safety and connectivity at the Sunrise Rim Vista Elder intersection. Again, the only intersection providing connectivity to existing users and folks who will reside in applicant's development. If my appeal brief should not be part of the record because I did not express my concerns specifically by citing specific sections of blueprint policies and goals in my public comment below, I am not sure what the legal authority is for this, especially when I broadly stated concerns tying them to the blueprint policies and goals and followed up with more detailed expanding on my more general concerns. Requiring that your public cite your blueprint policies and goals at the beginning stages of a of an appeal of a pardon me, a public comment makes another barrier to public participation in this process, which is already challenging. People have jobs, many more than one. They have children, other obligations. Meetings make for late nights on workdays and school nights. And the blueprint policies and goals are hundreds and hundreds of pages. Many aren't sure what they mean, how they apply. They see some mentioned by staff. They don't know that there's many, many more that apply. And they can't afford to figure out what to do and they can't afford an attorney to pay. They can't afford to pay an attorney to figure it out for them. However, if you're going to instill that requirement on your citizens, that same requirement must be imposed by the city. The city should not be permitted to conclude that something complies with its blueprint policies and goals and then only reference a few they think will make their case. Again, that case I cited previously that was cited by the applicant, the governing body is required to look at all facets of the comp plan to assure the land fits within all various considerations set forth in the plan. Appreciate your time. And again, this is about preventing preventable injury and death.
Thank you. Thanks, Tammy. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm going to ask there to be a motion on the table before discussion take place.
Madam Mayor, I move that we deny the appeal of P twenty-two dash sixty-seven. Second. Um, let me just run a couple of things from from the start. So I did not see an error in the decision planning and zoning. I did not see a violation of city law. I believe the decision was supported by substantial evidence that's reflected in the record. I believe concerns about traffic were addressed with conditions from the commission. And I see that the commission considered the full record of the decision. And it was not arbitrary and capricious. So that's really the terms in which we're we're looking at here. I don't disagree that that is not a great intersection and has some needs that need to be addressed there. The reason I ask questions about that corner lot is because if they do are doing improvements, that's probably your ability actually improve the intersection at the exact same time. And I would have a hard time requiring the developer to improve the intersection on the other side of the street. That's not even an adjacent property. It's actually on the other side of the Vista Avenue at that point. I do think that there needs to be a lot of safety concerns addressed on Vista. And I think that there's other mechanisms for us to do that as well, but I don't see an error in planning and zoning's decision with this one.
Madam Mayor, I agree with the council member, Council President Hallie Burton. I share all of your concerns and really appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I think we're very concerned about safety, pedestrian bicycle safety in particular. Unfortunately, our standard review is limited and based on that, I cannot find an error by P and Z here. And so I'm going to have to vote for in favor of the motion, but I hope that there are other mechanisms for us to evaluate how we can improve the particular issue raised tonight on Vista.
Yeah, would there be any way for us to formally elevate concerns to ACHD about the intersection generally unrelated to this application?
Yeah, I mean, you could just you you have just now by stating that you would like it to be elevated. But ultimately,
I declare.
This is something looking at Tim that our staff can work with ACHD on. I'm coming up with some possible solutions and timelines.
Then, Mary, just one comment there as well. There's undeveloped property on the other side of this intersection that will be developed at one at another point. Also, that Shell gas station. I don't know if that's the the long term, you know, way that that property is going to be used. And if you look at the street, the other thing to check with ACHD is when it's actually going to be resurfaced because it looks like it's due for resurfacing as well. Saying there's multiple ways, including the our priority projects.
Um, I, the Tim Keen, the director, has something to say on that. I just asked that he share the information with with council after, given that we've closed the public hearing. All right. Doesn't look like there's anything further. Clerk, we call the roll.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Kinni Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted. Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. And actually, before we adjourn, now that that's closed, Tim, will you share with us? I'm just so that the public can hear it as well.
Anyone, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah.
If I just wouldn't want anyone to leave this meeting without understanding that all the concerns tonight ra- raised about pedestrian and bike safety on Vista are ones that we strongly share. And and back to this point that was made by a couple of people this evening, the expectation is that the urgency of improvements on Vista related to bike and pedestrian safety, not only safety, but comfort and 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 joyfulness are going to be more and more important as the corridor redevelops in the new comp, in the new zoning ordinance. Vista is one of those few corridors where we have great transit service, where we're seeking this kind of redevelopment. That was, as it was mentioned by the developer. And so so we as a city know that this is an essential issue. What we have before us tonight, though, that council has just voted on is one development proposal on one parcel along that corridor. And the requirements around pedestrian improvements were made for that case, but there's much more to do here.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.
Post, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for hanging out for the duration. Nice to have you all here.